To send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Breis.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Hellfrank.
Here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Roy.
Here.
Mr. Ross. Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Senator Hackett.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Ryan Ross for illness.
Support.
Motion and support. Andrew Rothoff, please.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hellfrank.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Mr. Breis.
Yes.
Motion, here.
Item number four of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. I'd like to add an item under new business to hold discussions regarding Charter section 5.4.
What section does that regard?
Section 5.4.
Would that be then what new business that?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and have a support.
Support.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 5A, we have a proclamation for the United and Purpose for the United Way of St. Clair County. Whereas United Way of St. Clair County partners with the community in meeting the needs of the people in the city of Marine City, and whereas United Way of St. Clair County serves the people of Marine City through the support of 21 service organizations which seek to meet the needs of the people of our community, whereas these organizations, supported by United Way of St. Clair County, directly connected Marine City residents with 204 resources last year and indirectly many more, and whereas money is contributed to United Way of St. Clair County by residents and businesses staying in St. Clair County and are expected under the direction of the Board of Directors made up of local volunteers, and whereas United Way of St. Clair County provides the most efficient utilization of fundraising efforts by assessing and responding to indicators of local community needs, and therefore be it resolved that the City of Marine City designate fall 2023 as United Way of St. Clair County months in the City of Marine City, and be it further resolved that the City and Marine City Commission urges people and businesses of Marine City to support the financial campaign of United Way of St. Clair County to the fullest extent possible, and be it further resolved that the City and Marine City Commission on behalf of the people of Marine City expresses appreciation to the many volunteers, including Board of Directors of the United Way of St. Clair County and of the organization that supports for their generous contributions of time and energy to these agencies which seek to enrich the lives of the people of this great county. Do you make the motion this morning?
I do a motion to receive and file.
Make a motion to receive and file a proclamation from United Way.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but will follow up as necessary.
Can we raise our hand? I'm sorry.
Oh, she can go ahead of me.
We'll pay her. Appreciate that.
It's not a follow-up.
Trish May, 210 Huron Avenue. I just wanted to come today to kind of clarify some things at Mr. Hellfrank. And with full transparency, Mr. Hellfrank, I did vote for you, so if you could give me your attention as I'm addressing Commission, I'd be appreciative. I had actually voted for you to be part of this Commission because at that time it really seemed like your agenda was for the people, but as you and I discussed on Facebook, it clearly seems like you have your own agenda, and that makes me incredibly sad. You're inappropriate with your comments. You're inappropriate. Did you give it away?
No, I just would like to respond.
You're inappropriate with your comments. You're inappropriate with the information that you put out there. The stuff that you share is not fact-checked, and when people call you on it, you don't have a response. You don't have a response to anything. You say I never lie, which I guess is kind of up to debate. The other thing, one of your other comments that you had put out there, when it came time to look for the City Manager, I was a citizen. I was on the board, and it was an open meeting. I don't think I ever saw you at any of the meetings. Weird, because it's so important to you that we select the right person. So, I sat on the board along with Mr. Breis and along with Mr. Ross, and I think that we selected or at least gave our recommendation for somebody that came in. Who cares if he's only going to here for two years? He comes in with no learning curve, and he comes in with experience, and he comes in with a reputation that you are trying so hard to diminish. You're spending more time bad-mouthing everybody on this board than you are doing anything for the city. Your own agenda is what you have, and that needs to stop. I did some research on Charter myself, and I saw your little Facebook one, and you said Charter 3 dot 11, and that was the relationship of Commissioner to administrative services. And you even highlighted this yourself. Except for the purpose of inquiry, the Commission and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the City Manager.
You missed the part.
I did, but I'm highlighting the part that you really, you highlighted it. Let me go back on your Facebook.
Oh, okay. It's not appropriate for me to talk to you. Sorry. But that's not right.
Neither the Commission nor any members thereof shall give orders to any subordinates of the City Manager. So you can go.
Can you read the part after except where?
How about his line turn, not yours? Fair? Fair?
It's fair not to skip parts, right?
Okay, uh-uh. No, we're not corresponding.
You can stare at me all you want. I'm not going to say it in any way, shape, or form.
Don't intimidate her.
She's, he's not going to. I don't need, okay, but I appreciate it. Second part is 6-6. Any member of the Commission or other officers who shall fail to conduct himself in an orderly manner, like tonight, at any meeting shall be deemed guilty of misconduct in this office. 6-8, investigation. By it for the purpose shall have the power to inquire into conduct of any department. Conduct, that doesn't mean that you get to go on Facebook and share your side, because that's all you do. Mike goes out, he goes Facebook Live, and he shares what his interpretation is and what it is that he wants you to hear and not the facts that actually happened. Mike FOIA'd this, and I didn't get this, and I didn't get this. Mike, the people of the city did vote you, and I'm here to tell you that I, as somebody that voted for you, will be the one to spear up your recall. Because you are a menace. You are ridiculous, and your misconduct and everything that these people up here had to deal with and everything that those people up here had to deal with is not what they put you in office for.
I appreciate it.
Okay, the people have spoken.
Those aren't all of them, though.
Who, right?
It's a good majority.
Uh, not really.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah, or we can do a poll.
Yeah, I've got one right here.
Okay, so, Paul Schach, Marine City resident. This was the last decision coming up for Alfred tonight, I'll be honest. I sat down. I've been silent for a very long time. I've been watching and observing, and being up here tonight, I think is honestly one of the hardest podium presentations I've ever had to do in my entire life in a Saturday meeting up here tonight. I just want to echo off what the previous lady said. I'm just going to, corals and peace. We unfortunately went through a time, and I had my fair share of say, I always did my research, my homework, of the city residents not liking the city administration between a former mayor, the former city manager. It was hell. It was. I fought and fought. I stood on morals and morals and whatever you want to call it I thought were necessary to fight for. I finally thought we were in a time of peace. I was ecstatic when I saw Scott Atkins get hired with his background. And I'll tell you something. As soon as he got in here, I called him. I said, hey, Scott, my name is Phil. I have some friends with the city. I want to start on a fresh page. We've got a new administration, new everything. Can we talk? Sure, Phil, come down to my office. We must have talked for 45 minutes to an hour about my views for the city, my ideas for the city, what his views for the city were, and I think he's an outstanding guy. We have what I believe to be an outstanding new DPW Director of the HEAT project. We've had an outstanding police chief for several years who continues to be outstanding. And we have an outstanding fire chief who does a great job for our fire department and our community, and I appreciate every one of you. I appreciate Nicole Posey. I appreciate Michelle Goodrich. And I apologize. I know you've had some hireings. I forgot the other ones. I think it's Kristin. I could be wrong.
Kristi.
Kristina, thank you. I appreciate the work she does. I appreciate, is it Kayla at the DPW, the one that's like the second, correct me if I name it.
Kayla.
Kayla. I appreciate Jason Bell. Jason Bell, if you don't know, our clerk. He's doing two roles right now. He is not only our full-time city clerk, he's also doing the full-time city clerking job of the Marine City Police Department as well. Those are two big hats to wear, and I apologize for that. I was extremely ecstatic that the city was moving forward, that we're in a time of peace, and I'm just going to come out and basically say, I'm asking Commissioner Hellfrank to please drop the hostilities. I know I've moved here for a long time, but you know me. If I'm against something that any of our city is doing or the administrators part of our city or commissioners, I'm going to call it out and I'm going to say it, and it goes both ways. And I'm actually looking forward to trying to work together with the newest city administration, the new City Commission, and trying to be on a better page to better the city. Doesn't mean I want to agree with everything. I don't always agree with everybody, but when I come up, I have my research done. I have my homework done, and I respectfully present my case and what I believe in. And what's going on now, I don't believe in it. One, this is not me. This is not my style for how city government should run or be operated. And I want to thank all of the other commissioners that are doing everything they can for this city and fighting against what's going on right now. And, you know, if I get attacked for it, I get attacked for it. It is what it is. But I have to stand up here and finally, finally do what I feel was the right thing to do, and the statins need to do it, but it is what it is. Thank you for your time tonight, Commissioner.
Mr. Yankee, or is that I don't know if I have me? First and foremost, I want to say that I am still adequately opposed to a pot shop in Marine City, but because of Commissioner Hellfrank opening that can of worms, I now want to say how much I appreciate the due diligence in the way you are spending time to word that ordinance in such a way that it safeguards Marine City, that it gives us boundaries and guidelines, so I appreciate the hard work, the time, the money, and the effort that has gone into it. But I know that Commissioner Hellfrank has not been happy with this. He doesn't like delays. He doesn't like to be told no. And I have a question for you. Have you ever watched a toddler being told he has to wait for no, told no? They carry on. They fuss. They complain. They throw tantrums. And even when they're given advice on not to do it and that there are consequences, they still don't listen. In fact, they do exactly what they want to, and they point fingers and they pout when they don't get their own way. The behavior of Commissioner Hellfrank over the last several months is unacceptable, and his actions as of the last few weeks should be grounds for dismissal. He has been disrespectful to each one of you. I have seen how he's spoken to you over you, and you have given him advice and advised him not to, and he continues to rant. He has been disrespectful, and his behavior is reprehensible. But he thinks he has the voice of the people, and I can assure you, he does not. He owes all of you an apology and should step down immediately. His polling on Facebook groups, his disparaging comments, and his accusations need to be put to a stop. Thank you for all of your work.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to give you a brief update on the Community and Economic Development Board meeting a few weeks ago. We had a couple of things that I think we should get out in a timely manner. The City Manager had brought to us a series of best practices for redevelopment-ready communities. We went through those at our last meeting, and I voted to continue on a monthly basis to take one of those best practices, review it, and see what we as a Community and Economic Development Board could do to help bring some of those actions into fruition. We can't do them on our own, but we can certainly make recommendations to this body moving forward. We plan to do so. The Redevelopment-Ready Communities, for those of you in the audience aren't familiar with it, is a project of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation that assists communities to bring their economic preparedness up to snuff to enable that body and others to say, hey, here is a place where we have facilities available for business to come and to take part in this community. It was entered into back in the days of City Manager 11. COVID got in the way. We're picking that back up. Fortunately, they have changed the rules so that we no longer have to complete all of the requirements in order to qualify for things like grants. There's a new category, if you will, called Redevelopment-Ready Essentials. That, once we get on that path, we can use that to leverage the city for things like grants. The other thing that we brought up, and this is kind of neat. One of our members, Bob Weiserbopp, is involved in Classic Cars and Classic Car Shows and things like that, which Commissioner Hendrick well knows. We are in the process of planning a Classic Car Rally in October of '24 between Clay Township, Algonack, and Marine City so far. It'll take place on city and county roads, which means we don't have to, you know, fuss about it as far as the city goes, but it's an opportunity for people to take part with their vehicles if they so choose, or for organizations to take part, maybe put up a booth along the way or whatever. But it sure attracts some attention. We'll be getting more information out to you as time goes by. Probably look for us on Facebook or something like that. So if you're interested in enrolling your vehicle or maybe doing something with Scouse City or Little League or something like that, we'll get you information as to how that can go moving forward. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
And then Ross like to speak?
Jeff Snyder, 1987 South Parker Street. In my lifetime, I've gone through and seen and taken up language and ballot preparation. I've lived and voted in three different locales in my life, had to review and try and understand numbers of initiatives and ballot proposals. I just ask the Commission, will you vote? No means no. Yes means yes. We want something, but we don't want something. Not one of these you have to figure out through 17 paragraphs, whether one side means no or one side means yes. At least keep it simple and professional. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the time. On a positive note, I was really impressed with Maritime Days. I had my two little grandkids up from Florida. Other, they didn't like our cold water. But they had a great time on the kids' day. It was short notice, but they did an awesome job, and I'm looking forward to next year so we give them some awards. Also, the DPW Police Department. I really appreciate the Commission's support of the Police Department. I've seen new vehicles on the road. It shows a lot of support by you guys who support our law enforcement, and I appreciate that. You probably know what I'm here to speak about. I've been speaking on it on a regular basis. I was hoping I'd have to keep coming back. But as far as Mr. Hellfrank goes, when he showed up from day one, his main goal was to get a pot shop in town. And I think his true colors are coming out, what kind of personality, what kind of individual he is. So you need to think about that when you're thinking about this ordinance and how you proceed on that. I read a little article. In the state of Michigan, 135 municipalities and townships have agreed to have a marijuana shop in their town. On the other hand, 1,375 have said no. There's a reason those 1,375 have said no. There's a reason the only one in St. Clair County that's received, and I know it was poured here on, after all their legalities and legal problems and going to court and all those kinds of things. You need to think about those things. We voted unanimously not to have a pot shop in our town. Some of you people were on the Commission. All you had to do was simply do nothing. That's it. Now, we're going through this process and about what the ordinance reads, what it doesn't read. Our fine city attorney, who's an excellent man, and I know people that know him, he does a great job. But we're paying him to do all this stuff. And then we have to come back and have an ordinance if the ballot issue goes through. Then we have to go through that process. That's more money going to the city attorney. Then somebody doesn't like it, they sue it. So you need to think about these people say it's free. It's not costing us anything. Absolutely is costing us anything, and we didn't have to do anything. I'm only here for the kids. You know what? I understand you guys are politicians and I understand the political world and how you operate, but your constituents are not just the voters. They're not just the people who voted. They're the people that come into this town to come to visit our fair city. They're the kids in the schools, and they're the other people who necessarily can't vote. The kids can't come up here and vote, and some of their parents can't come and vote because they don't live in the city. But putting a pot shop in our, in this town sends the wrong message. It's not necessary. We don't need it. There's a reason that 1,300 communities have turned it down. We need to jump in, and we need to be the next one to say no, although we already said no. Again, you can go on the internet. I'm not going to go through all the statistics, but in Washington and Colorado, the places that have legalized marijuana and edibles, which is really my biggest concern is the edibles, is all kinds of things are happening. Kids in emergency rooms, taxicrossing driving deaths are going up. All those things are happening. I'm not under any illusion that the Marine City says no to a pot shop, that all the drug issues are going to go away. I understand that. But we're sending the wrong message to our community and our kids and the people who come to this town that we want to have a pot shop and a marijuana shop. The business people I talk to don't want it. Most of the community don't want it. So if there has to be a ballot issue, let them go out and do all the work and spend the money. Why are we as a city spending the money, putting it on a ballot issue? Doesn't make any sense. We need to think about our kids. We need to think about our community, and we need to say no to the pot shop. Because otherwise, I got to rally all the troops and get out here on this ballot issue and spend a lot of time doing all that. I guess I'll have to do it. Maybe that's democracy. But you guys were elected to make the hard decisions. You should be making these decisions. We shouldn't have all this people running all over town trying to fight a ballot issue. We shouldn't have to. That's why we elected you. And just think about who is the fair clown, I hate to say it, that you're following down this aisle with this pot shop. We don't need it. Please say no. We don't need to do anything more with the ordinance. Save the town's money. Think about our kids. Put a hat on as a grandparent or parent and say no to the pot shop. Think about the politics. Thank you so much.
I haven't been here for a while. My name's Paul Yankee. It's Reverend Paul Yankee. I'm pastor of Living Faith Lutheran Church down here. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I come from ex-police work, and I also come from being a firefighter, you know, and have been involved in different boards and things over the years. Robert's Rules of Order is a good thing to take a look at, Mike, if you're going to have anything to do with any kind of board, showing respect to the other people on the board and sharing your views. I want to thank all of you for your service. I know that, you know, it's a hard thing to do serving in public office. Also, I want to say, Mike, that if you were really smart, if you had any ounce of integrity in you, you would resign and say less than trouble removing you from office. And I'm no fool. I, you know, am a very highly decorated ex-police officer, and I'll tell you, I know a little bit about the law. And under Michigan criminal law or constitutional law, there is 168.327, which is for city officers. There's also 369 for township and 383 for village officers. But under 327, we could bring charges on many things that you've done against you and write a report and sign it as a witness and turn it in to the governor. And the governor can either appoint the Attorney General or the global prosecuting attorney to investigate it. Now, if that's what we have to go do, Mike, then maybe that's what we'll have to do. And you have no idea who you're dealing with here. You have no idea, Mike. And I'm going to tell you something. You are what the Bible calls brakah in Hebrew in the Old Testament. You can look it up. It's an empty head. An empty head. You have no common sense. You are redeemable because you are a human being, although you kind of show greatly that that might be a human under somewhat of a judgment in the last things that you said in your actions. And you are like a little kid who doesn't get their way. And we don't need, I agree with everything Roland said, having been an ex-dare officer, and I'll tell you something. Marijuana today is much more potent than what it was in the 1970s or 1990s. Much more potent. And it is an introductory drug that leads to a lot more serious drugs. And you know what? You are your worst enemy, buddy, because when you get out there and act like a moron, it shows that you are a biter. Your daughter is scared to death of you, your teenage daughter, you know, and that's why you get, the police get called regularly to your residents. And if it would have been me, you'd be sitting in jail, because I write really good reports. And I would have never gotten you off in the first place, which should have never happened. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Remember the whiskey ton of the West Coast is rough.
All right. Yes, Gabriel Castanillo, 160 South Perry Street.
Good to see you.
First of all, I'd like to welcome our city, the City of Marine City Manager. I'm sorry you have to deal with this. This City Commissioner, we've heard over and over and over, Mike, you are way in the rear head. I don't know what is going on with you emotionally, mentally. You're having some kind of breakdown, but you are not fit for the job of City Commissioner. You have no understanding of how.
I'm not sure if this can be heard if you have a microphone just saying.
You can hear him just fine.
Well, on the video at home.
Now, to be clear, you are not fit for the job. Now, to be clear, you are not fit for the job. You have no understanding what the position entails. What you have done over the last six months is an embarrassment to the city. You are hurting the city. What you did the past week, and you still felt enchanted with that ridiculous post on Facebook about taking your dog into the cemetery and attacking their officers, which was ridiculous, right? You're, you're, you don't understand why that it was so bad to take a dog into a cemetery. The scientists say, the rules clearly, you feel you're above it and there is no law. You fail to understand, which is what you fail to understand with the whole city, is, is, there's grave sites in there, loved ones are buried. Nobody wants a dog going in there, yarning or defecating on graves. You don't understand that. You tried to attack the officer. Then throughout the week, you attacked our city manager, you attacked our, our city attorney. You're making slanderous comments that could result in lawsuits to the city, which I'm going to have to pay for because you can't shut your mouth. You are out of control. You do not belong. You can't worry about what's going on on Facebook that actually governs. You make these bogus polls, just to get likes, that do not apply to the real world. You've got to stop. You are not fit for the job. You are absolutely not in any kind of position of leadership that you should be in, in a position of leadership. Right this whole meeting, we have residents that are speaking and talking. Every one of these folks here, from the paid city staff on down, are listening to what everybody is saying. You are going through your phone, going through your documents, which is typical for you because you're never prepared for the meetings. You have no understanding what the corm is, Robert's Rules of Order, you have no idea what that is. No idea what that corm is. You began the meeting by interrupting somebody. All, I could go on and on and on. Everybody has said it. You are nothing but an activist who assumed that role during a very challenging time for our city. You do not care about governing. You reveal what your intentions are, what your beliefs are. You know, Commissioner Ross isn't here today, right? Yet you go on Facebook and you're whining because you don't have your profile as beautiful as his. Like, what the heck is that? It could have been a human error, but the city staff, like, it's not there. You know what, they should put on the city profile, you're, you know, just as Mr. Ross is. But they should put your profile on there with your criminal record and your behavior in courtrooms. Maybe that is what they should have because your story passed, Marine City does not know.
There you go.
It's my time. Please not interrupt me. Just sit there and listen. But then again, you don't listen. You prefer to attack residents. There are many people that go on Facebook, yet when they disagree with you, their comments are deleted, they're removed from groups, they are blocked. In closing, you, you really do need to resign. Don't go through the recall because you can't be removed from office. It doesn't need to be statutory. The city charter allows it. We, it's, it does. It, it allows it. Does that get covered? The city charter allows it. Especially if we have lawsuits because of your actions and words that could result in lawsuits in Marine City violating certain rules. You can't be removed. It does not take the governor. So understand it. My suggestion is reading the charter. Because you were questioning, when he described what the charter was, you didn't know what it was, what he was referencing. You are not prepared for this job, not even remotely close. Not even remotely close. You put other commissioners, who I'm sure are part of bringing under the wing to calm you down, I, I think that they're extremely frustrated with your behavior and conduct. Scott, where you're going, attack the city staff, attack the city attorney, quit trying to stir up trouble where there is time. The government hold me in just a little while, top. Just two last things that I, I would like to suggest to the city council.
Can I get one more?
You can't.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Anybody else?
You don't want to get up there. It's just hard to get up, that's all. Here, here, Jim. Yeah? Okay, last week I said, anger makes a better caboose than an engine. I'm going to say it one more time. Anger makes a better caboose than an engine. And I'm sure our minister friend here from the Lutheran Church will agree with this. This is something, as I'm a minister also, that you say to people all the time, don't make late, quick decisions. When somebody dies or they lose a child or whatever, postpone every decision because when you make decisions under emotional distress, they're never good. Now, I said this and Commissioner Hiltfrank said, oh, I can do whatever I want, I can act emotional. But if you had any class, which you don't, apparently you don't, you would have said, thank you for saying that, I'll take that into consideration. Another thing I want to say is, they talk, people have talked about misinformation on Facebook. One thing for sure, a half-truth is a whole lie. Another thing I want to say is, there's a quote that I have in my house that I see all the time. I was laughing at it. And it says, how come people who think they know it all never know when to shut up? Boy, that describes you to a T. I can't believe what it describes you. But I want, I don't want to linger on that one. My last thing is, you know, when I was a kid, I used to watch a program called Soupy Sales. He lived here, Marine City for a while, I think ten years. And one of the things Soupy Sales, they happened on the Soupy Sales Show, was that there was always pie going in somebody's face. Well, let me explain this. When these people go to the ballot box, they pay you with their vote. And they seem very, very concerned about this, they're really, they have buyer's remorse. And definitely, if you don't resign, there's going to be a recall. And not only are those people that have remorse going to be able to recall you, but people like Dean did not vote for you also get voted against you. And I'm going to tell you something, you're going to be hit with a bunch of humble pie. I've watched people recalled in this city. It's not fun. It's, it really destroys you. It's a very destructive thing to go through a recall. And what you don't realize is, your family's going to be affected by this too, including your father who has a business. Because it just destroys your reputation. Now, that's the guy that got recalled. It's just a very, very, very destructive thing. You do not want to go through a recall. And you are going to go through it, there's just too many unhappy people. So I'm just going along with everybody else. That, Mr. Hiltfrank, it's time for you to resign. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Mayor? I'd like to find out if you can actually get up and do this because...
Okay, we got a couple things on it. Okay, first of all, if you're dressing up there, it goes this way. But we talked, is this actually...
No. I was going to ask, is this even appropriate?
This is appropriate, he's a commissioner.
We have commissioner privilege at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so last time there wasn't an issue. And I don't know, my time hasn't started yet. Last time there was an issue and now all of a sudden there is?
Yeah, because you don't know how to stop.
No, 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 I can't disprove you. No, 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 no. I know, I know, I was hard for you to keep things straight.
We did... Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to continue.
All right, well, my whole...
It is my First Amendment right to be at the podium and do not get to tell me that I'm not allowed to be at the podium.
I want to make sure that you're clear if this is allowed or not. Because I didn't know last time and we had some discussion, I just want to make sure if this is clear, if it's allowed as a citizen.
You spoke the last time we, we questioned the appropriateness. And he is not allowed to go to the podium under the auspices of being a member of the public and now refute what we agreed not to refute when people raise their public comments. We start a public comment period by telling you all, it's a one-way street. You can talk to us, we're not going to respond or die on it. We want to hear from you. If, if you have an issue, if you have a true issue, we'll be back to you through the appropriate person. But Mike, you can't use the podium to respond to these people under the umbrella of being a public citizen. So I think it's inappropriate. Did I finish? I mean, I know I have cognitive problems, but I'll try to get through it. You, you can't use the podium to do what you can't do when you're sitting here. You understand that? And so I think it's inappropriate that you're going to use this opportunity when you have your own opportunity during commissioner's privileges.
No, I had, I just had one, that was one thing about Phil, I wasn't going to respond to any of them.
But you already did.
Just, just Phil.
Just Ross.
You can't, you cannot address the audience.
I give up my opinion, you shouldn't be joining us.
Okay, then sit down.
Where Paul was taken, he should have been on the board.
Yeah, I do have, I'd like my five minutes of respect, please. Thank you.
You don't have five minutes.
Your seat is up there. He's a, he's a government official. We're the public at this point. He wants to speak, he does it from up there. This is, this is basic one over one.
Mr. Hiltfrank, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order. I'm simply trying to make a five-minute public comment.
You're out of order, you're a commissioner.
As a citizen, like I did at last...
I'll make a motion that is out of order.
Support.
A motion to support Claire out of order.
Again, my right to speak?
Vote on vote.
Yes?
Mr. Edgar? Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Rory? Mayor Vanavas?
Yes.
Will she carry? Who's the motion by?
Motion by...
Support. Support. All right, thank you.
Where is it at? Wait, does that carry, it's gotten, I decided my First Amendment rights.
Mike, you have, you have an opportunity to speak here for this privilege.
No, no, I have to speak as a private citizen and I also have a capacity as a commissioner. Those two are the same.
You don't understand basic government, right there.
Where, where's, where's the law, huh? Where's the law that says I can't do this?
Where's the law that says you can't?
That's the point. Right?
If you can't enforce things that are laws... Like, without a ruling from your own commissioner.
A ruling of law.
It's a trial order.
You're out of order.
I'm going to continue. I'm not out of order, I'm going to continue.
Mike, I made a, I made a motion and it passed. And you're just holding up the meeting.
You're not a private citizen.
Yes, I am at this podium.
No, you're not.
No, you're not.
Mr. Hellfrank, I ask you to sit back down.
I'm a private citizen at this podium and I would like my right to have five minutes to speak.
Mr. Hellfrank, we're asking you to sit back down.
I would like to have my right as a private citizen and my First Amendment rights for the Constitution to be respected and be able to speak.
Mr. Hellfrank, last time we asked you to sit down.
I would like to be able to have my First Amendment rights respected and be able to speak as a private citizen, just as I did in the last...
We have Mr. Hellfrank promote, please.
Come on, Mike, I want you to go.
So, you're going to remove me as a citizen or a commissioner?
We called out you disorderly, we have asked you to sit down. We have followed the process.
But you can't remove me from my seat as a commissioner. That violates the voters and their right to have their representatives sit in that seat. So if you remove me from...
You are preventing us from continuing the meeting.
You remove me from this room that is direct interference with voters and their rights who elected me.
That's not true. You don't understand this.
You are preventing us by staying there and continuing the meeting.
You guys are preventing, exercising my rights as a private citizen. That's what's going on.
But you're an elected official. I understand.
I'm a private citizen and commissioner. Both, you can be both. You can show up to a board, it's just like we said, there's different boards, there's different things as a candidate. I'm not doing anything wrong, I'm not disorderly. I'm simply trying to have my five minutes to speak.
They are trying to have an orderly meeting here?
And I'm trying to have my five minutes to speak like there are eight other people in front of me. And if I'm removed from here, I will press the assault charges, I will.
If I'm saying, you're inhibiting a commission meeting from going on.
I am trying to exercise my right as a private citizen as my First Amendment allows me to speak.
Mike, this is a public meeting, okay?
Yep, and I'm participating in that public meeting.
And they have asked you that they do not want you here anymore.
They don't have that right. They don't have that right to do this. No, they are inhibiting by not allowing me to have five minutes to speak. Wouldn't it be easier just to allow me to speak five minutes? Wouldn't it be easier now? Let me say what I want to say.
You're just orderly and preventing us from continuing the meeting.
Which is actually a charge. It's actually a charge. Would your new name is needed to continue? They have asked you to sit down or they want you removed.
I'm not removing an elected official, you can remove people from the...
I'm not, I'm not asking to remove an elected... You, you yourself are saying that you're a private citizen.
At this point, I am.
Okay, so at that point, you need to go outside and we can talk out there, that's fine. I'll talk to you all day online.
Leaving this podium until I get my five minutes to speak.
They are telling you that they do not want you here right now.
I'm not leaving this podium until I get my five minutes to speak.
Mike, sorry, you aren't giving their process.
I'm not leaving this podium until I get my five minutes to speak.
Arrest me.
Yeah, that's right, he wants to be a citizen, that's right.
I'm not leaving this podium until I get my five minutes to speak.
They should ask you to... We didn't respond.
Until I get my five minutes to speak as accorded me on the firm.
Who's this, the stunt?
Dammit. It's right, man, yeah?
The dammit, he's going to be ticketed if he doesn't, if he doesn't stop his behavior. If he continues his behavior, arrest him.
Thank you. Ticketed for what?
Unfortunately.
What are you being ticketed for?
It's been cleared by the prosecutor.
What, what is it?
He's going to be ticketed, he's going to be ticketed for disturbing the peace.
Disturbing the peace, I'm just trying to exercise five minutes of speech?
Mike, you're interrupting my mission.
So arrest me.
That's dumb. Here we go again. Oh, whoa, I can't wait for this post. Oh, whoa, it's me. Just do it, Mike. There it is. Now you can move from office.
Yes.
Now you start the process.
He just wants it on camera.
Exactly.
Showboat.
Try to stay on duty. I'm in hand, I'm sorry, I'm being arrested. Let's go, Paul. You know, what's your favorite word? Are you going to attack this officer too? All right, come on, Mike, you need to talk to him. Thank you, sir. That's what brought the unity right there. Should we get a motion for a five-minute...
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Support.
Al Shager?
Aye.
Aye. He has his commissioner privilege.
Yeah.
He has commissioner privilege. And yet almost that, that's a closed session when he tried to blow it. And he said it wasn't loud.
It was loud for me.
We're going to call the meeting back to order at seven fifty-seven and we're still on public comment. Was there anybody else? All right, we'll move on to item seven, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved. Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now moving on to item eight for the consent agenda. We have the community economic development board meeting minutes of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, three hundred Broadway committee meeting minutes of June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, business license for, for Little Piece of Heaven Beauty Spa, a special event permit from Tenured Automotive for their fourth annual memorial car show and customer appreciation. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D as presented?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda of letters A through D.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Vote, pop vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rory.
Yes.
Mr. Voss. Sorry. Mayor Vanavas.
Yes.
Mr. Vice.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And we have for item nine, item removed from the consent agenda. We do not have the items ever removed. So going on to number ten for financial business. And for expenditures including payroll of one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures including payroll in the amount of one thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars? One million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures including payroll of one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Support.
Any discussion? Vote, pop vote, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rory.
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas.
Yes.
Mr. Vice.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item ten B, preliminary financial statements. Can I have a motion to receive and file a preliminary financial statement?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, carries. On item ten C, the engagement of McBride Manley for annual sewer rate computation. Can I have a motion to approve the letter of engagement with McBride Manley to perform an annual sewer rate computation for Cottrell Township in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars?
I'll make a motion to approve engagement of McBride Manley for sewer rate computation in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
And any discussion? Vote, pop vote, please.
Mr. Vice.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rory.
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And item ten D, consideration of Teamster's contract signing bonus.
Is the letter good or is it not?
I'll, I'll wait until I see that you have perhaps a motion and support unless I want to be the answer questions in advance. I think the memo is ready, please.
Can I have a motion to approve the letter of understanding between Teamsters, vote two fourteen, and the City of Marine City for a one-time contract signing bonus in the amount of eight hundred dollars?
So moved. Support.
And any discussion?
As Mayor and Commissioners, I just would like to point out that this mirrors the language that the city's police officers contracted to approve. However, it initially had come up in the first session of negotiations. It was actually under the city manager Tappan at the time and really just was not carried through the process that you need came back after. However, we had already ratified and prepared the agreement on both sides. I thought it was reasonable to bring to you. And I also just want to point out that again, this is a one-time with the language as stated here and the breakdown for the cost of the city, the majority of this will come out of water sewer fund and then there will be a portion split by general fund and then a portion split twice, local roads and major streets. So again, eight hundred dollars from general and the rest is split amongst the other enterprise accounts. So it is one time, two thousand, two hundred dollars and then we'll be finished after this agreement.
So should we upgrade the motion to say three two hundred or?
I would just, I would take the language that's recommended here. I just gave you the total and I'll look.
Any further discussion? Vote, pop vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rory.
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas.
Yes.
Mr. Vice.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We'll move on to item eleven, the recreational marijuana facility pilot initiative language discussion. And anybody want to leave it?
You got a guy?
It's warm up here. Thought I would take the podium because I know that this is an important topic to the commission, to the city, to the people who come to speak on this issue. Back in February, in a memo dated February twenty-third of this year, I gave you some research and I came to three conclusions at page, pages ten and eleven. I basically told you I think you have three options on this issue. You can do nothing. And you can maintain and place the ordinance that prohibits all facilities in the city. Since two thousand nineteen, there's been no citizen ballot initiative to mandate facilities. That speaks loudly that you have an ordinance in place since two thousand nineteen with no challenges or initiatives to go in a different direction. You did what you had to do on medical, which required you do nothing. You did what you had to do on recreational was to proactively enact an ordinance prohibiting such facilities. That's where you are right now. The second option I gave you was to proactively develop an ordinance scheme where you would have control over where recreational facilities would come to be located in your community and what type of facilities those would be. And your discussions had always been you wanted to stay away from growing operations and other operations of that nature and only focus on the idea of a retail and/or a retail business under the five categories of facilities that are allowed. The third thing that I said to you is to proactively work on a city ballot initiative that does not violate the law. And I specifically said to you in my memo, this alternative is, in my opinion, difficult. Later in the year, you voted to have a ballot initiative language developed so that we could start to look at that process. So on September first, I issued you a very comprehensive memo that said my research indicates that these folks can do a ballot initiative. You cannot. You can enact ordinances. You were elected to enact ordinances, to repeal ordinances, to amend ordinances, to modify ordinances in the direction of the policy that you undertake. That's under the charter, your role. Under the charter, a citizen can do one of two things. And it's allowed under the state constitution and flows down into your charter and your charter is controlling on this issue. A citizen can do a referendum, which means they're asking for a repeal of an existing ordinance. Or they can do a ballot initiative, which means they want to put forward onto the ballot the question of an ordinance. I was here in a meeting when, when it was told to you from the public that a ballot initiative is coming. You can bet on it on this issue. And yet the time period came and there was no ballot initiative to date. There could be in the future. So in my memo to you dated September first, I went through all of this and I know you enjoyed the reading. But at the end, I come down to the, to the following conclusions. We have a state constitution that allows for ballot initiatives and ballot referendums. We have laws that say you are controlled by your charter. Your charter does not have a provision that allows you as a body to initiate a ballot initiative or a ballot referendum. You have a charter that says the public has those two rights. So my advice to you is to A, do nothing, or B, consider the type of ordinance that I presented to you for review and potential consideration at future meeting for a first reading or for further discussion. The type of ordinance that I'm proposing to you has worked in other communities because it's an ordinance that designates an area of land where such facilities would be permitted use under your zoning ordinances. But it doesn't get into the we're going to allow five because as soon as you have a number in your ordinance, then you have to develop a competitive process as to who becomes one through five. And that's where all litigation arises in other communities. I know Port Huron and Chester. There's been a lot of litigation with respect to when you put a number on it, you know, then which five do you select? How do you select them? What's the criteria for the selection? You have a very good, but you have a very warped staff in your administrative services. I've seen ordinances where we're going to grant them to the first five and then, and then there's a race to the counter and you, and somebody has to pick the winner, who was here first? And was the application complete? And was all the information there? What time? And then you have, you have ordinances that, that talk about, you know, the criteria of, of, and now you become the subjective analyzing body as to the criteria. I don't want to put you in that position. Here's a position I think you want to be in. If you want to have an ordinance, use the buffers, use the setbacks, use a zoning category and control the location of any facility that gets permitted. And then I gave you in that ordinance, a, a, a pretty comprehensive set of things that would have to go to site plan approval through the planning commission in terms of security plan, odor plan, parking plan, lighting plan, setbacks, all of the criteria. And then I further gave you an example of what an application would be, would look like so that it would be manageable. It's a checklist application, but it's very comprehensive on all the criteria that an applicant has to demonstrate to you if they want it to be considered for such a facility. So you have a draft ordinance. And I think that you should take time to look through that ordinance, get comments to me on that ordinance. I already have some from Commissioner Hendrick about the language and the setbacks. I tend to agree with her comment that the setbacks should be from lot line to lot line, not building to lot line. I, I don't think you should be near a church. I don't think you should be near a school. I don't think you should be near residential. I certainly don't think any facility should be near a rehab facility. So all of those were in my draft. On the other hand, I don't think you should create an ordinance where the net result is there's no land available when you use those buffers and therefore it's an ineffective ordinance because you're, you're, you're just putting an ordinance in place, but it results in no property being eligible. So I think what, what we should do is the following. If you want to pursue an ordinance, take a look at the one I gave you, give me your comments. We should discuss it at the next meeting. If in fact we go with a proposed ordinance, I'm not saying you have to agree to whatever you're voting on it, but we should also then run it by your planning commission so that they can get back to you and say, if you enacted that ordinance, here are the locations where a facility could come to reside. And I think that you have a talented planning commission that, that could do that for you. And then, when the ordinance is in a shape that you believe is at least, you know, worthy of discussion and possible motion, put that on your agenda and, and you've listened to the people and make your decision. Now I know I was expecting comments receiving that, you know, well, somehow I have flip-flopped with respect to the ballot initiative process and that. Unfortunately, that's not true because I think my spoken or written word in February was, I'll look into it. I'll try to make it happen for you. I'll try to find a way where you can get this to a ballot. I can't get it off your desk. This is on you.
Well, one of the things too, as we talked about the ballot initiative, it was requested that it was door to door, but if you look at state law, it says it has to be.
Lot line to lot line.
Yeah, we couldn't even do that.
So anyways, that's, you know, it's, it's, you know, I wanted to, you know, certainly allow the public to hear the rationale. There's a lot of law behind this that I presented to you. You know, we talked for a long time when I was at the podium, we talked about the nature of advisory opinions. Let's, let's play out the scenario because I think it's interesting and then I'll, I'll sit down because my five minutes are on. Think about, think about how this could go if, if you actually had the power to take issues onto the ballot yourself. So this time it's recreational marijuana. So next time it's some other complex question that you're kind of hearing both sides and so the commission says, let's put it on the ballot. So then the next time you get a complex issue, you say, let's just put it on the ballot, right? So pretty soon, you're not doing what you were elected to do by passing ordinances. You're passing the issue to the, to the ballot process.
Correct.
Right? So I think that was the thinking, you know, of our state constitution was we'll give them the right to initiate something. You get the right to make ordinances. They don't have the right to make ordinances and you don't have the right to do a ballot. So they can push an issue into an ordinance through the ballot process. You can make an ordinance by developing and passing the ordinance. Any questions? Okay, and I would, any questions from the public? I'm happy to answer.
Oh, we just had one was what is the deadline if somebody wanted, I'm asking, I don't. But if somebody wanted to put this on the ballot, because it was in February, but what's the deadline if somebody wanted to submit it to you guys?
I don't, I don't, well, you would, you'd be submitting, you would actually do follow the process. There's, you would circulate ballot petitions, right? So here's what has to happen if you want to do a ballot initiative on any issue. You have to develop the ballot question. You have to develop the ordinance that you seek to have approved through the initiative process. Then you have to circulate and verify through the circulation process petitions. You have to get some percentage of the last people who voted during the last presidential election or something. And then you have to get it into the county timely. Then the county, after the clerk verifies that the addresses and the people are really people, then the county makes a decision, looks at it and says, okay, we're going to print it and we're going to put it on the ballot. But there's timing for all of those factors. I think that that's the election where this could happen is in the beginning of twenty-four.
In fact, I might just answer, I believe it is November is the deadline. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I think you're right.
Seven months ahead, so everybody can have the process.
Yes. I asked you this before, under the law, we can submit a ballot not to have one. They allow for that. So my question is, so if they go out and give, say, we want to put on the ballot, we go out and give and put it on the ballot, how do they solve that issue?
Well, you're asking an interesting question. I'll give you a good, hopefully a solid answer. Number one, you don't really need to put a ballot initiative out there to have none because you already have that. Right? You already have an ordinance in public. You've already won that ballot issue. Right? Well, you're right. Well, you're right. Merck, the law that governs recreational facilities in Michigan, does say citizens can put initiative in to force a number of facilities, or likewise, they can put an initiative in to prohibit all facilities. But you're already in that problem.
So in theory, if the ballot passed and the commission made the ordinance allowing the pot shops, what if I went out and got a ballot that said, "No"? What's going to take precedent? Is that up to a judge?
Yeah, that would be, that would be- And plus, and plus, you know, in the situation we're in, there has to be a referendum as well, because you're going to have to repeal the old ordinance. You know, my goal as your city attorney is to manage and provide these folks with enough information to make decisions and not be involved in litigation, as some of you have tracked in other communities. So I've used this ordinance scheme in other small communities, and it's been litigation-free. I've watched and participated in other major litigations that are up at the Supreme Court right now, where competitive processes have been challenged. So I'm trying to give them guidance on the law, and at the same time, what I believe is their most likely good chance of not having litigation on these issues. So anyways, that's where you're at. Yes, sir.
Speaking as a member of the planning commission, we're tired of dealing with this. I wish you guys would just have a motion tonight to keep the thing in place as it is, pass it, and we're done with it. I'd say a lot of trouble.
The only reason why we're considering this ordinance is that if somebody does do a referendum, then we have no control. There's our problem. If it was as easy as that to just say, "We do it, and we're done," but the problem is that somebody does a referendum like they did in Chesterfield, they opened up a big can of worms, and then they had, what, no control over-
Yeah, then you lose a little bit of your control. I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to-
That's the problem.
You know, and believe me, I know the commissioners here from the public, and I know the message has been loud, but, you know, we're also trying to manage these disputes going forward, so. All right, I want to sit down.
Any other discussion on that?
Well, as we leave it, it's the same. We already have an ordinance for Hibiscus.
Yes.
And-
You've had it since 2019.
Right. And we voted on that, so, and I'm not, well, I shouldn't speak for myself, I'm not afraid of all, so I'd just like to leave it where it's at. We got an ordinance in effect, but that's my-
I think that issue will be before you sort out.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move on now to 12, new business. First item is a for library board appointment, and I recommend to appoint Mary Rodding to the library board. Good point. Board. Motion and support and discussion. Mr. Roy had also applied because there was no other applicants, but now that she was seeing that there was no other applicants, she did recommend that we go forward. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Now on to 12B, the amended open in-tax ordinance, second reading and adoption. I have a motion to adopt ordinance 23003, an ordinance of the City Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to revise alcoholic beverages, Title 11, Chapter 114, Section 114.01, entitled "Consumption in Public Prohibited Exceptions Organizations Would Permit."
I'll make a motion, we approve, I'm sorry, in our packet, ordinance 23003 is, oh, I'm, forgive me, I'm having a senior moment here. I will make a motion, we approve for second reading and adoption ordinance number 23-003, amending the open in-tax ordinance.
Support.
I have the motion and a support. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
No.
Mr. Roy.
No.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Okay, 12C for the municipal marina regulation ordinance, second read and adoption. I have a motion to adopt ordinance 23-004, ordinance of the City Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to establish municipal marina regulations, Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 08, entitled Municipal Marina Regulations.
I will make a motion, we approve ordinance number 23-004 for second reading and adoption, the municipal marina regulations.
Support.
Okay, the motion and support. Any discussion?
Yep, I just wanted to say that I use my old packet since there were no Richard Marx on here, and all the changes were waiting to be discussed last time, so I think the commission made all the changes.
I thought I had that one signed, but my apologies.
That's all right, I know others seem to be going up.
Thank you.
All right, if nothing else, then roll call, please.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Okay, on to 12D, the Metro Act Right-Away Permit Extension. I have a motion to approve the Metro Act Right-Away Permit Extension for terms to end on December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
On to 12E, the clutch department, is for the agenda and meeting minutes software purchase. I have a motion to approve the agenda and meeting minutes software agreement for Granicus.
That's what I'm recommending, yes.
Do you really think it's going to be?
I don't believe so. I read three quotes, and I don't believe that.
You presented three.
Okay, just one more. You don't have to base it off of my recommendation, it was just my recommendation.
No, I read the one that was already transcribed. I don't know, we didn't get into that.
We just went through kind of what the software provided to us in efficiency and workflow. I can contact them back. I don't see it being long. There's a lot of municipalities that are going to this software. Port Huron uses it, I know that 100%. Buda, Texas, was one of the ones they showed me in the demo, and Frankie moved that we just went through as well. I think it's a rather quick process. It's going to be getting everything historical, because they'll take everything we currently have, put it into this system, so it's all part of one. That will probably take the longest, and then setting up our agendas is the only other part, and then setting up users would have to be on our end of the city, so I can't imagine it taking long, but then again, I don't, yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
Right, it could be longer than I've been determined. I told you you need to move.
No, I like the fact that once you do the agenda, and you know, if anybody enters, quite a good stuff.
Yeah, in any citizen's, just if you didn't get a chance to read the agenda, with the, with this software, you're able to sign up for delivery notifications, so once an agenda is posted, you'll be able to get notifications when that's out there. I believe it's delivered right to your email, so you'll be able to get it right to your email, and you know it's there, and so you don't want to search for it. But on the website, it'll be way more user-friendly for citizens, for commissioners, and other board members to access that information.
Granicus is a very stable, long-term, well-used system in multiple areas.
And just another clarification, too, it will work with our current website. It'll put like a redirect link, so it'll be, it'll look like our website, but once you go to like the commission or whatever board you select, it'll redirect to that thing, but it will work with our website.
I will make a motion, we approve the purchase of the software from Granicus for $3,696.
Support.
If no other discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Okay, and now on to item 12F, Charter 5.4.
So I asked to have this added to the agenda, and I really, I'll put this out there, I had no desire to ever have to go down this path again, but I don't think, me personally, I don't think we have much of a choice. So I'd like to make a motion that the commission initiates Section 5.4 of the charter to start the hearing process of removing Commissioner Hellfrank from office. This requires that the charges be reduced to writing and delivered to Commissioner Hellfrank at least 10 days prior to any hearing. So this motion just starts the ball rolling, starts the process.
I'll support. And with that, any other discussion?
I just want to point out, this, just so everybody realizes, this is the same one that was used on me, but different situations every time, each one has to be taken separately, so I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Okay, moving on to item 13, Eminence Bank Report. 13A, the city attorney report.
That's fine. Commissioners, I enjoy working for you, and citizens, I enjoy being here with you. How's that?
That's good.
That's very nice. And thank you, we appreciate you.
My anger is in the caboose.
Thank you, thank you!
That's a good quote.
13B, the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, I have a few items. For the public, I just want to point out that on this evening's agenda, under the expenditures, it is very rare that we reach $1 million or go over $1 million at any meeting for expenditures. However, this is the time of year that we're doing a routine tax settlement, so we have to pay other taxing agencies, and we also disperse back to ourselves. So of this 1.2 million, approximately 900,000 was tax settlement related, so I think it's important to eat one out because that number is very large and jumps right to the ash. The Michigan Community Center grant was successfully submitted today, and we got an acknowledgement. It was a challenge, so I especially want to thank everyone who was involved in gathering of information, even in the previous grant process, which we still have not heard back from yet, in my place, placemaking grant. So we have two grants for 300 Broadway out. Again, if we're successful in this grant, it is the better of the two. But again, thanks to everyone that worked on this, volunteers, and community members, and commissioners, and staff, and Michelle Gitter, especially. She locked herself in the office for part of the weekend, it's a holiday weekend, working on this, and I've already pulled my hair out, as you can tell, she was working on it, and I stopped her, because we had, we experienced technological issues, as did everyone in the state. This application was originally due last week of the 31st, and because of a glitch with the software program for the application, the state extended it to 5:00 p.m. today on the 7th, and at 4:14-ish, we got an email from the state that said, "Everybody, whoops, it's not working, you can't validate, you can't certify, you can't submit, and we're going to extend that deadline now until tomorrow at noon." Miraculously, in that little space, at a little warp, you know, we were able to get in at 5 something in the morning, and most importantly, we had an email that said, "Congratulations, you've been accepted, here's your number, cross your fingers, say chant, lights and sage, whatever words we're using." We're in the opera, so thank you for the mic. Today was also a good day for us here with equipment and technology. The generator has been installed kind of behind us, outside of the building, and it was tested and is fully operational. We still have some technology pieces to put together for Wi-Fi connections and notification, so we'll wake up our DPW superintendent in the middle of the night if it goes off. Thank you, Joe. So we're looking forward to fitting the pieces, but it was tested, it worked successfully, and we won't have to be in here with flashlights and whatever. Market calendar is in advance, tentatively October 12th. It's a Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We're going to be hosting a master plan visioning session. We'll come up with a creative name. Joe, you and I, we'll think about it. I'm sure we'll have an A for the event, but it's going to be here at Municipal Complex, and we'll try to encourage people to come out for maybe some cider, donuts, and things, but most importantly, give us input on the future of the master plan and recreation plan. So kind of set that aside in advance, and we'll have more information. And then, nice audience tonight, thank you for your patience, perseverance, and being here tonight. And if you really want to continue to be involved, we have one opening remaining on the planning commission. Applications are available for interested parties, they are online at city website. So we now are down to just one opening on, for its committees and commissions, and we appreciate everybody's volunteer service. So thank you all, that's all I have.
And anything additional from Department heads?
All right, I just want to update you on a few different things, and I'll be brief because I know it's been a long meeting. First of all, I'd like to start by apologizing for some of the, I heard some comments about the cemetery, well-deserved. Some of the growth got away from us when we had stretches, two, three days at a time with rain. We've got vacations, we've got people coming down with illnesses that are often. It's really tough to keep up sometimes, for that I apologize, and I promise you, it won't get to that state again. I will be out here with a week with, but I have to be. So I just wanted to touch on that. One of the other things is, I know that some of you are aware that I am in the market for a wood chipper after the storms that we had, and handling the debris two and three times, having a company come in and haul it out, it's just counterproductive, and I've built some good relationships over the years with companies, and obviously, with something used, which is the route I'm going to go, you can't go through a bid process. So what, the company that I'm dealing with, and I'll give you more details when the time comes, they've been good enough to let me choose from an array of their chippers, use them for a month, decide if in fact that's the one we want before they give us a deal at a fraction of the going rate or price that most of them are going for, and I will support that with documentation of other chippers and stuff that are comparable. Just give me a heads up on that, that's going to be coming your way, so hopefully. Jim actually brought something up earlier about the marina ladders and porta potties. Season's pretty much done, but next year, until the park gets underway and completed with restoration and stuff like that, I think it's a good idea that we put at least one or two porta potties out there. The other thing was ladders. I did get some pricing on ladders that were made basically for that area, because it's about nine feet deep from the end of the dock to the river bottom, and as Scott knows, they came in just shy of a couple thousand dollars each. So I'm going to go a different route with those, and we'll get them in, probably still this year, even though the year's winding down, it's still important to have some out there, so hopefully we get something out there in the next couple weeks. 300 Broadway, I've gone through and had all the fire suppression, gone through and updated, that includes the fire extinguishers, which, they basically hung the new ones on the wall right near the historic extinguishers that were in there, so- so, so, those are still there, but everything has been approved and up to date, and I call it the insurance policy on the insurance policy, because as many of you may know, that the fire suppression and the extinguishers are not up to date, should there be a fire, the insurance company's not going to cover, so, it's important that we got that taken care of. Lastly, I would like to upgrade the street signs, this would be done in phases, and I'd like to start with the downtown or the business district. Phase one would be Bridge Street, South Water Street, and then Broadway, up to South Merritt and North Merritt, and this is kind of what I'm looking at, some of you have seen them.
Yeah, I like it.
So, with your blessing, I would like to move forward with phase one, eventually, we'll move into the interior streets and stuff, too, but we have to start somewhere, and cost-wise, obviously, between the length of the, you know, the street names, and, and the size, obviously, the price is very, but I'm thinking we should do phase one, probably in the neighborhood of about a thousand dollars, so with your blessing, I will move forward with that, so. Other than that, that's all I have, and I enjoy working with you all, too. Any questions?
If I may, I probably embarrassed Joe, he's a humble guy, I, I kind of want to refer to him at times as Saint Vincent B. Schmidt, because what he's been working on in these signs, we couldn't buy the signs from sign manufacturers, and he's looking at a way of us buying signed blanks or templates, and then working with, you know, a layered approach with, with the graphics company, and that just usually doesn't happen, so I appreciate it, and I know we all appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And just to take it a step further, the signs that we do remove, we can put on the website and sell them for.
South Water Street.
Love to have that, if you're out to their man cave or she shed or store, or whatever, so, that's another way to help recoup some of the cost of those signs.
You might want to offer the new signs for sale, too, if people want to buy those, new south water, so that way they don't disappear.
With a slate mark. And lastly, one more last, Scott had mentioned about Michelle working the weekend, I just want to give a shout out to Michaela down at DPW, we had no beach attendants for the entire Labor Day weekend, because they've all gone back to, moved or gone back to school, she worked the entire Labor Day weekend as a beach attendant out there, just so that we'd have somebody out there, so shout out to her, too, so.
Great voice.
That's it. Any questions, Amy? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of quick things from the clerk's side, between everything else being thrown at city staff, we've been battling in the county and the state with a new proposal on early voting for elections, it is a nightmare, so the groaning is far worth it, there have been email chains back and forth for the last two and a half weeks with all of the county clerks, to try to clarify what is going on during early voting, I still don't think it has been settled with what, with what we need to do, but to kind of give a rundown, there are two options, we can either come together as multiple municipalities and do it all, like in a county-wide early voting, it's going to cost an astronomical amount, I don't think anybody in the county wants to do that, they discussed the rural intervention center, it would come at a very large cost for municipalities, smaller ones like us, I don't think we can afford it, I don't think we can staff it, so I think that one's been kind of squashed by the county itself and other clerks. The second option is, we can go into it together with local municipalities, so for example, we could go in with Elginak, Clay, Saint Clair, just make it small, but again, you have to have a central location that's big enough to house those precincts for early voting, and it's nine days of early voting. With that, again, you run the risk of cost, security, electricity, reliable internet, and the biggest one of all, we have to buy another tabulator if we do that, you can't use the same tabulators that you do on election day, I don't think for us, it's cost-effective to do so. Option three, we just hold it here, nine days of early voting, again, it would have to be secure, it's a discussion we could have come December, because we wouldn't be able to hold commission meetings or other meetings in this area, because it has to be closed for those nine days for election security, we wouldn't, they're clarifying still, we still need to buy another tabulator for that reason, but if they're thinking, if we hold it here, we can use one of our election day tabulators for that, again, you can't tabulate those votes until the end of the actual election day, so what's the need for the extra tabulator is, we can't give straight answer.
So, for, for meaning, so, we could go back to the fire hawk.
And we could, and again, that could be a discussion for, for that time, and then there's discussion of early voting, if people need to register to vote, what the clerk's hours need to be, and if you're not here at your local municipality, and you're there, how do they come and register vote, so it, it, it's been a nightmare, there's still clarifications to come on it, hopefully I'll have more in the next month or two, hopefully before the election, I should say, but we're, we're still working on that, so, we're getting there, one day at a time, one day at a time.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
On to fourteen, Commissioner Privilege and liaison reports, and you go ahead, start with Commissioner Clausen.
Well, we do have a Planning Commission meeting coming up, so, and there's two, three things on the agenda, I believe, so we're back in the planning stage. I do want to apologize to the public, and that's what happened here tonight, I made that motion, because I feel we needed to come to an end, and I want to know how we stood on it, so I just, I want every, everybody would stick together and work together, it would be better for the whole community, thank you.
Commissioner Bryson.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Roy. I just want to say, school is back, back in session, so please be careful, and watch out for the children, watch for two weeks of school, stop for school buses loading and unloading, and please completely stop at stop sign, it's often, the, time hasn't changed yet, but later on, it's going to get awfully dark in the morning, so please watch out for the kids, and everybody else is out watching, okay, that's all I got.
I just want to thank all of our staff, I know how difficult it was for all of you coming here and taking on the tasks that work at hand, I know how difficult it's been for you with all the disruptions and all the issues, but I just want to thank all of you guys, because I tell you, we couldn't keep this city running without any of you, and we need you all here, we want you to all to be happy here, and we're going to try to do whatever we can to make things right, so that, that you stay, and you, because again, we cannot do this alone, we, we just appreciate every, every one of you, DPW guy, all of it, everybody, so.
Very nice. Just got a couple of things, Commissioner Moran had said I had missed the CED board, hard to getting appointed down there, I had made an obligation and, but thank you very much for that opportunity, everybody. And I want to wish the Mariners good luck tomorrow night versus Saint Clair, so if you're making this chance, head out to that game, that'll be a good one. A couple of things I'd like to thank, one's thanks, Commissioner Hendrick, with, with all of our employees, my son, my dad, as well, I'd also like to thank the Women's Civic Club for their ongoing work they do in that park, it's a beautiful park, and they spend a lot of time and work doing that, and that is, that park, people enjoy that, just going through it, there, there's events that are held there, they do a lot of work in that park, it was just not the name on it, but they do a lot of work there, and then also thank you again, Rosely, for the, all the work that you have done. All right, and with that, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Make the motion to go into closed session.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.